Hi, I'm going to put you on speaker. Val can't come, Tyler can't come.
We are live?
We are live. Everyone, we are live. And we have two minutes, so we expect Rollin to be here, so.
So we're ready to go here?
Did Tyler say he wasn't going to be?
Yeah, he told me today.
Val?
She told Gretchen.
And we expect them?
Okay.
And we expect them?
I saw him pick up his packet too.
Okay, I'm going to call the meeting for the June 28, 2002, City Council Meeting to Order. We are, I would just ask that we pause our, okay. Pause. If you guys would all like to stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk please call real call?
Councilman Bryson?
Here.
Councilman Coe?
Here.
Councilman Carl?
Here.
Councilman Scaramucca?
Here.
Councilman Trimble? Councilwoman Jester?
So is there a motion?
Having received requests for absences, move to excuse the absent council members.
Second?
There is a motion and second to excuse the absent council members from this meeting, Councilwoman Val Jester and Councilman Trimble. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are at approval of bills, is there anyone that would like to make a motion?
A move for approval.
Second?
There is a motion and a second, is there a Finance Committee report?
Yes, there, this month is a rather large total, we have total bills of $587,758. $450,576 of that is forest land purchase, so it is actually a pretty normal month. Majority of the larger bills this month are related to projects and improvements around town, including Gibson Olsen for $22,370, HD Fowler Company, $22,534, and Systems Design, $11,807. The PUD bill was $14,227. Everything is in line and I would recommend passage.
Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, bills are passed as audited. We are at approval of minutes, is there a motion?
A move for approval. Second?
There is a motion and a second to approve minutes as written, are there any corrections or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carries. So we are at the point in our meeting for a public hearing for the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan. There is, so I'm going to open at this point, the public hearing for that. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment on the Six-Year Transportation Improvement? I'm going to wait the full 30 seconds on this one. At this point, I'm going to close the, hearing no one who wants to make a public comment for the, excuse me, any kind of comment for the public hearing. I'm going to close the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan Public Hearing. We are now at public comment, is there anybody that would like to make a public comment at this time? Hearing none, I'm going to move on and there will be another opportunity to do public comment later at this meeting. Were there any committees that met in the interim from the last meeting to this meeting? Then we will move on beyond that. So our first order of business is old business, under old business, which is the ADA policy, which has action. Councilman Carl, would you like to make a motion?
I would make a motion that we adopt this ADA compliance policy.
A second, Pat?
There is a motion and a second. Is there, there is discussion, because I'd like to say something, but is there anyone else that would like to do discussion at this point? Would the mover and the second either explain the difference or allow for a change? On the second page, it says no later than 48 hours before the scheduled event. If it would say 72 hours, 72 business hours, that would allow it to be Friday. And that's what we traditionally have done to, actually, let me see, 72 business, so it would be, yeah, Tuesday, Monday, and Friday, so Thursday night ideally, because that's what we've traditionally done, allows us some flexibility to get certain interpreters.
I think that's a reasonable technical modification to make sure it works for us.
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
We certainly want to be able to follow our policy.
And the only other question I had for the two of you is on the third page above resources, it says at least three years. I don't, I think that we should keep it for three years, but I didn't know if there was some sort of reasoning. One of the things we've noticed with public documents is if there is a fine, I mean, if we can have a deadline, a specific deadline, then it makes it easier to destroy them afterwards. If it says at least three years, there's some, a group of people might keep some four years, somebody else might keep it.
So you're suggesting making it a hard three years?
Yeah.
Again, I think that's a reasonable correction.
Does that fall in line with the Public Records Act? Or does that apply in this case?
I don't know. Mr. Coker?
Yeah?
So, on the third page of the ADA policy, there is a paragraph, it says all written complaints will, and I'm going to just read a part, and responses from these two offices will be retained by the City of Montesano for at least three years. Is there a reason that we have, is there any kind of public disclosure, public document that would require us to keep it longer than three years?
I don't think so, I mean, obviously, I think the statute of limitation would be three years for an ADA claim typically. So that's probably where that comes from. Obviously, if there was any litigation or any issues like that, we'd probably inherently keep it longer anyways, but I think that's where that three years would come from.
How about no less than three years?
Yeah, yeah, no less than for sure, because I, I think the statute of limit, the statute of limitation on the ADA is three years, I believe.
I, I read it that way, that that's the way I understood it, was to comply with the retention rules so that that would be available. No less than three years, I think means the same thing.
Okay, so should we just do three years?
Yeah, three years.
Just three years then?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. So I've made two changes with your permission. The first is the 72 business hours and the second is flat three years. Does anybody have any other thoughts or comment or discussion?
No, I would just, I would just mention that this is the type of document that I think we should be open to amending as needed, if we learn about.
You said 72 business hours?
So that's just Friday, usually our meeting's on Tuesday, so it'd be Friday, Monday and Tuesday. So we would be notified by Thursday if somebody needed some kind of device or an interpreter or something, because turnaround time for those type of things is usual. We would obviously perform more than 72 hours, if we had a week's notice, that'd be ideal, but that could be potentially difficult for someone to decide. But if we got 48 hours, that's the beginning of Monday, maybe Sunday night, and that's almost, I don't even think we could comply with that. Oh, we might be able to if we're lucky, but, so. Anything further? All those in favor with those changes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, and let the record reflect that the mover and the second adopted those changes by agreement. We are at new business, which is the Fire Apparatus Use Agreement. This, if I remember correctly, this document is for us to be able to work with a district to, to be able to use their, when we, when they either show up or we show up at their incidences, that we can actually take control over their equipment, I don't know what.
Apparatus.
Apparatus, thank you, obviously.
Yeah, and Vinnie, Vinnie, this is Chris, so this was reviewed, this was a very, almost identical to an agreement that Hoquiem has with it, this worked well, when I talked to the chief about it, it's worked well, I guess, for a significant period of time.
There are some blank spaces on this, but I would ask whoever makes the motion, if you choose to make a motion, to allow the chief to fill those blank spaces in. Because I'm not sure what apparatus.
I think it's for the specific apparatus, right.
Is there a motion?
I have to move adoption of the temporary apparatus use agreements, with the understanding that the chief will fill in the blank areas on the recitals, item two.
Is there a second?
Second?
There is a motion and a second to approve the temporary fire apparatus use agreement, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, thank you. We are now at the Heiner annexation matter, and I'm going to turn that over actually to the, no, no, all right. Okay.
Is this the last one?
Hopefully.
A move for approval.
Second.
There is a motion and a. Oh. Well, then I'm going to hold this off, we were so excited there, so I'm going to, the motion and the second, I assume, are withdrawn at this point? Till we get to the ordinances, because we need numbers. Okay. So close.
They will be back.
Maybe.
We are now moving on to the East Wenuchi bid approval. This is the Roglands bid that was actually under the engineers' assessment and with Public Works Director Olden's desire that we award the project to Roglands Incorporated. Is there a motion?
Move to award the project to Roglands for a total of $715,130.
Second?
There is a motion and a second to award the East Wenuchi improvement, Main to Sylvia to Roglands for $715,000, Is there any discussion? Would you like to say something?
No.
Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. I just wanted, in your, in your packets, just for your information, are two things of interest. One is the Department of Ecology Award, which I think is pretty fantastic for the city of Montesano, and I just wanted to make sure you knew that for the fourth consecutive year, the Montesano Wastewater Treatment Plant received the award of wastewater treatment plant outstanding performance. And I think that record is a wonderful thing. And so, this is for information only, if you see Kevin, you should congratulate him. Kevin, Norm, Jeff, and Brian. You should congratulate all of them, if you see them. Next is the Chehalis Valley Historical Society Letter, also for your information. This is just a thank you letter on behalf of the, the society too, for the ongoing funding that the council gives to them to operate the historical building. As the letter indicates, it is around 50% of their budget, and so it's a pretty significant amount for them. The last thing on the agenda under new business is the AWC Legislative Affairs. As, as I think I've mentioned to you, I am now on the AWC Legislative Affairs Committee, and so I attended my first, or my second meeting, and I thought, in between the meetings, they had a really interesting survey as to what the various members on the committee believed were important to their residents. And the legislative committee is across of usually mayors and city council members or council presidents, and small cities, big cities, and east and west side. And so this is really interesting, we engage in a pretty long discussion about these as well. And if you have any questions about these, or if you, if you have any thoughts, please let me know. I think over the next couple of meetings, I think we have another meeting in July, and so over the next couple of months, they're going to focus on what the AWC will be primarily interested in lobbying for in 2023. Any questions about this?
Did any, was ever, I'm just looking at it now, did any attention get paid or anything get brought up as a result of the discussion on the EMS training funding?
Nope.
As far as the city?
So, Grace Harbor.
City's getting something on that?
Grace Harbor is actually fairly unique on the EMS, and so from a perspective of AWC, it would be a version of spot zoning. And so, the cities were relatively fixated on four major things, despite this, at least in the conversation. I think when they're voting, the cities, this is the, this is the percentages that we're looking at. Infrastructure is always big, and then the zoning mandates, there is a request to take our R1s across the board, regardless of population, and turn them into a higher density. So the city of Montesano would now have R1s, that would mean that you could do duplexes, you could do triplexes, et cetera, et cetera, without the city's ability to negate that. When challenged on that, there were some legislators that showed up and discussed that. And when challenged on that, the argument, the defense was that the cities would still have a right for design review, which was not, in my perspective, very helpful. I thought, I do, just as, so you guys should know, is I oppose the zoning mandates, and that's the position I would take at AWC, unless you guys are strongly feeling about it, and you should communicate that with me. I don't think that the state should dictate zoning mandates within all other cities in the state of Washington. The purpose behind it is the issue of increasing housing and access to housing, so that they, there is more housing, and that to some degree makes sense, there's nothing wrong with that policy. It's, I don't, I think that zoning is, is really important for local communities to continue to have control. And so that's why I would be opposed to it. The other issue that was a pretty significant conversation was police reform. Probably three or four cities from the Snohomish area outside of the AWC Legislative Committee, Priorities Committee came to speak to the committee, they were, they are looking for reform on the issues of police and being able to have more authority for the police to deal with crimes and, and what would be more, now, I don't want to say police chases, because that's not my name, but the where they can pursue, that's the word I was looking for, sorry. And to be able to follow through with any crimes, instead of having it limited to, one of the things that one of the Snohomish area cities said is that we, we have for the eighth time seen our city hall get vandalized, and we can, we see them on the camera, we see them go away, we pick them up, we offer mental health, and they are not so severe of an issue that they can be involuntarily committed, and yet the court system says that they have mental health issues and so they're released. And so it's a circular problem, and they continue to vandalize and create disruption. So there's not any really good solutions, but in, within the AWC, they do, they would like to focus on that. Any questions about that? So far, I, I would say that the first three or four issues that you see up there, I would be in support of, and that would be my position and, to some degree, the city's default position. So if anybody has any issues after reading through it, it would be wise for you to call me. Next, we are going to move on to ordinances, resolutions, now I would entertain a motion on ordinance number.
Resolution?
It's an ordinance. No, it's an ordinance.
The Heiner annexation is an ordinance, the resolution on the six-year TIP is a resolution.
So, we're going to go ahead and deal, why don't we take a minute break? And then we'll come back, so we don't have to. We can work on council comments. I'm going to go ahead and open it for public comment while we're waiting here, if anybody would like to make a public comment at this time. Okay, I'll wait then, I'll wait. Because I'm really interested in your public comment.
Aye.
Is July 25th, is that a Monday? Yes.
So the entire week, so you cannot go down Main Street on the railroad area 24 hours.
They shouldn't be starting putting out freeway signs two weeks before that.
That's, is that going to impact entrance to Crow's Nest and Senex, or?
No, that's going to be able to go down.
Well, they will be able to go down from north to south, it won't be from.
Yes, they won't be able to come up the off ramp too.
What other announcements do we have?
I think that's good timing, actually, you know, it's probably better to get in the fall when you have people coming around in tow trucks and go and fish in, and just get it done in five days, and it will be good.
We'll have to remind people that Brumfield Avenue and South Earth Street is not a short trip. I don't know how we're going to do that. Anybody who lives in Montesano is going to figure that out. You're not going to stop.
Yes. So we're going to go back to the Heiner annexation, this is ordinance 1644, is there a motion?
Move for adoption of ordinance number 1644, second.
There is a, there is a motion and a second for the final annexation of the Heiner, we called it the Heiner annexation, and that ordinance number is 1644. Are there any questions or discussion at this time? Hearing none, with the clerk, please do a real call vote.
Councilman Bryson?
Aye.
Councilman Coe?
Aye.
Councilman Carl?
Aye.
And Councilman Scaramucca?
Aye.
Okay.
So close, and with that, the ayes have it. Thank you for, well, I should say it expansively, thank you for going through this journey with us. So now we are at resolution number nine. Nine?
989.
989, which is the resolution for the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan, is there a motion?
I move, second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan, which is 989, resolution 989. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. We are now at public comment, is there anyone that would like to make public comment at this time? Yes, sir.
First of all, thank you very, very, very much for your willingness to persist, I think it's been five years that we've been trying to get this annexation through. It all started actually in, you want the long story or the short, you guys got time? It all started back in 2016, the spring of 2016, I had a major heart attack. And so, one in the morning, my wife dialed 911, and we waited, and it was, we waited, we waited, and it was close to 20 minutes, 15 to 20 minutes, before the ambulance got there. And I was in excruciating pain, and it was, and I was just, I was hanging in the balance. When your life is just hanging in the balance, you get a whole different perspective on, on life. And then later down that year, in the fall, in October, my father had a heart attack, and we waited, and he didn't make it. And we, if we would have just went across the street into the cow pasture, we could have had the local ambulance come and pick us up. But since we were outside of city limits, we had to wait for the Central Park ambulance to come and help us. So anyway, that, that was the installation, and that's the real reason that we would really like to be annexed into the city, is that we have the local fire and police service there. You know, we're going to hopefully take advantage of some cheaper water rates. And, but really, just really appreciate everybody's willingness to hang in here with us and go through this process with us, and allow us to become citizens of this wonderful city. And I really want to thank Mr. Olden as well, for his patience in working with the county over and over and over, and finally getting something that everybody could accept. All right?
Well, and back at you, thank you for your patience, because this took a really long time. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment at this time? Hearing none, we will move on to council comments. Oh, yes, how could I forget? There is, and we didn't discuss this ahead of time, but there is actually on the agenda, under new business. under new business, so we're moving back, the capital facilities plans update. And we need to do this in order to do any kind of request of funding for 0.09 funds. We did this last year, but this is an update on that. Was it last year or the year before? I think we did it last year.
Two years ago.
Two years ago?
And so, so this capital facilities update is specifically to revise the description of our project at the park and, what we call the park and ride, to meet more specific county economic development funding requirements. And it, and it really makes the project less specific in our capital facility plan, but it, but it meets the county criteria much, much better. That's the, that's the onus.
So this is resolution 990. And I know that it is unusual, but we are asking for action today. It is an update with that language. I know that you don't have a lot of notice, but we would really like to get the application in. And we cannot get the application in without this document. So would the council consider allowing for resolution 990 to be addressed?
Given the fact that this isn't a new item, this is simply an update to a process we've been following for several years, I move for adoption of resolution 990.
I would second that.
There is a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 990, which is a capital facilities plan update. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carries. We are very thankful, council members, that you were willing to do that. Especially because there may not be a meeting next meeting. So now we're on to, and I just want, actually, I also wanted to confirm again that the week before, unless there is something pressing, it'll be one of two situations. Either the CFO will notify the public that our meeting is canceled per your authority from the last meeting, or Councilman Trimble will be here on the 12th to run a, a meeting for something that is time sensitive. Now we're moving on to council comments. Councilman Carl, would you like to start out?
First of all, I apologize for being late this evening. I was out on ambulance calls, I almost, so, but I did make it. Thank you. I'm excited about the adoption of the ADA policy. I think it's a very positive thing for our community to be proactive on those, those issues, those types of issues. And the amendments, the changes were very apropos for them. The fire apparatus agreement, there wasn't a lot of discussion about that. But to elaborate just a little bit, that allows us to have our, our staff assist. I think it's Hoquiem, Aberdeen and District Two in wildland fire situations in a mutual aid kind of agreement. Gives them, our staff experience with that. And with the changing conditions of wildland fire that we're experiencing in the Northwest, this is a very positive thing to have better, better trained, better opportunity for our folks. So this is a, a very positive move. Other than that, I'm looking forward to the Fourth of July weekend and a fabulous fireworks display.
Councilman Coe?
I would just carry on with what Councilman Carl said. I'm looking forward to the Fourth of July weekend and would urge safety and caution when using fireworks. I'm pleased that the city took action to kind of give us our ability to kind of rule ourselves when it comes to fireworks next year, starting next year. So looking forward to this year though, again, being a good and a safe one. I had the opportunity to attend the Greater Grace Harbor, State of Grace Harbor luncheon today. And the county's done, all things considered, it has weathered COVID. I don't know if I'd say it well, but we have, we've, we've come out in a, in a position stronger than a lot of people. The number that really struck me though was the median household income and the difference between the median household income and the average cost of a home now. I think it was 50 something thousand. 57,000 is the median household income. And the average cost of a home is over 300,000 for the county now. It's, housing affordability is such an issue and as the AWC continues to meet, I hope that's something that will be, be taken up and looked at as a, as a priority when it comes to the needs of our citizens, not just in, in Montesano, but the county and the state. And it gives me great pleasure to welcome the Heiners to Montesano. It's a heartbreaking reason, Lauren, for you to want that. But I'm glad that your patience paid off and welcome to the community that you serve so well.
Thank you much.
Councilman?
So thanks for everyone for adopting the ADA policy. Have to compliment Councilman Carl on pushing the issue forward and keeping us on task. So thanks for that. I think it was important that we get that done quickly. Great work by the city crew to get the Department of Ecology award. You know, water, clean water is a very important thing for us around here. And I appreciate that they're doing their job well. Couple of thoughts on some of the issues the mayor brought up, on the zoning mandate. I support the position you've articulated. I think that it's a noble goal to increase housing opportunities, but I don't think a one-size-fits-all mandate is, is appropriate. So I, I would join you in opposing that being applied to us. As far as police reform, there's a lot of reform to be done to the reform. In many, in many areas, I mean, we're still a very fortunate community that we live in, but in many cases, it's become a free-for-all out there. And I think that we need to participate in the process and share our voices when these things are being considered because I'm concerned that there will be too much inaction and we really can't wait any longer than, you know, next session, there needs to be some major, major improvements, so. And finally, glad it's official, Lauren. Thank you for hanging in there with us.
Councilman Skaramuka?
I have three things. First of all, Fourth of July is coming up, so I want everyone to be safe. I want to hear about blown off fingers. Secondly, Lauren, welcome. You know, your, your story is the story that I was trying to tell people time and time again that lived on West Simpson. And it seemed like I just fell on deaf ears. And people didn't want to, either they thought they were just going to live forever or they'd never have any problems. So, I mean, I wish we could have, we could have convinced them that, you know, the difference between life and death sometimes is response to it, but it didn't work. And thirdly, I'd like to ask the council to be, I want to be excused for the upcoming meetings of seven, 26 and eight, nine consecutive meetings. I'm, I've got some itinerary that puts me in the back country. I'm trying to rearrange days, but it's tough to do that. I can't do it, so. If things go as planned, I will be missing for those two meetings. That's it.
Thank you. I, oh, I have two items. The first is a congrats on Maddie Jensen, who's here. She just finished her BA in operational management.
Organization.
Organizational management. Or operational, organizational. I'm not sure what it means, but I don't know what engineering means either. So I figure, you know, it works either way, so. But that is kudos to her and congratulations. And I echo everything that all of you have said, especially to the Heiner family. And last but not least, talking about our sewer treatment plant and the good job that it, the people that are supporting it does do. The governor will be visiting it on July 7th as a model of what the flood authority funds can do and the success. And so that is fairly exciting. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
There is a motion and a second to adjourn. All those, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you, thank you.